Good evening. It's December 17th, 2024. The time is 6:30 PM.
Recording in progress.
I'm convening this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that participating on the Select Board this evening is Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve this evening, so we move on to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the New Year's Bonfire at Ware River Farm to be held on Saturday, January 11th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is Dino here?
I think it's Rich.
No, Dino couldn't make it, but I'm here.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. So if you can just walk us through what is being prepared.
Sure. So the event's on the 11th of January. It's at Ware River Farm, and there's going to be a large bonfire where people welcome to come, enjoy the night, have some food. There'll be a sausage guy, your mom on the go will be there to provide food. Vitamin C will plan to be there to provide beer and other refreshments. So as long as the weather cooperates, it sounds like it's going to be a fun night under the stars and, you know, near the fire.
Yeah, you've been an active participant in several events at the Town, and we appreciate it.
Yes.
Could you comment on fire and police activity for the January 11th event?
I'm not aware of the details for that.
So Tom, maybe?
So there will be both a police and a fire detail. I spoke with the chief. He said that the participants generally come in waves, like they're not all there at the same time, so he was comfortable with one police detail, and he said there would also be a fire detail.
Right, so both chiefs have in fact reviewed this, I believe?
Yes.
Great. And the estimated attendance is between 300 and 400. Does that seem right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And for parking, there are two parking lots available to handle this?
Yep.
I believe that's right. Okay, Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Rich, for being here. I know this event has been successful in the past, and Vitamin C Brewing has been a good partner. My question is more for Tom. Will Chief Murphy make the call, depending on weather, if it's safe or not? Is there?
Yeah, I'm sure if it's too windy or something, I'm sure he would cancel it or...
Okay, obviously, we haven't, we've had some rain now, but we had had that outdoor fire ban, and I know Hell didn't do their bonfire, so just sensitive to...
They did lift the fire ban, but you're absolutely right. If it gets too dry, and that's a recommendation of the chief, I'm sure Chief Murphy will want to follow it.
Okay.
As of now, it's been lifted.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions. Good luck, Rich.
Thank you.
And I do note that there is not a rain date. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for members of the public? Seeing none, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the New Year's Bonfire at Rare River Farm to be held on Saturday, January 11th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm, and I as well, we are approved. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We now move to consider fiscal year '26 departmental budget requests. Tom, do you want to just do a general introduction?
Sure, so this is meeting two in our annual slew of departmental budget requests. Tonight, we got about six or seven departments coming before us. Many of the finance team will be here tonight, and then we'll wrap it up with Randy and Ashley to talk about the DPW operations.
Terrific. So we're prepared to start with assessing. Erin, please step up to the hot seat and walk us through your budget request.
So I am Erin Delaney, here to present the assessor's budget. So the first slide shows our missions and our services. Pretty much to sum up, the office provides efficient and courteous service to the public while ensuring accurate property assessments for taxation in line with state law. It manages property tax data, excise tax for vehicles and boats, and handles tax abatements and exemptions. It also follows the policies set by the Board of Assessors. So the assessing department is made up of five team members, each with distinct roles and areas of expertise, working collaboratively... collaboratively... Together.
Let's collaborate on this one. Okay.
To ensure that all properties are accurately valued. I work full-time alongside with Jackie Barrett, the Assistant Assessor, and Sorrell Donlin, the Assessing Technician. We're also supported by two part-time employees, Maureen Carlson, an Assessing Technician, and Carrie Coughlin, the Data Quality Inspector. So we assess over 8,800 real property accounts with a value of more than $10 billion. I think the next slide shows. Which is a 40% increase in the past five years, a little over 6% increase from last year to this year. So we also have 400 personal property accounts with an assessed value of over $138 million and administer excise tax for about 25,000 motor vehicle and 470 boats. So this shows the number of exemptions that we've received in the past five years. So we see a little increase, or we see, it looks like it was decreased in the past four years. We think that that could be COVID-related. We're not sure why there was such a high number in fiscal year '20. And then the next thing shows are abatements, and they vary year to year in terms of, the biggest one I see is our reval year, where we received over 90. So our key initiatives are, this is our fifth year offering the senior means real estate tax exemption. We're trying to get the word out as much as we can, targeted mailings, and trying to reach all eligible seniors. One of the key things I think that we've brought on is aerial technology called Nearmap and a parcel detection change system called Pushpin, which really helps us comply with the DOR guidelines. So it's basically a flyover that, it's a plane that goes over in the spring, in the summer, and in the fall, and it picks up, it takes pictures, and then Pushpin will compare the pictures from one year to the next, and we can pick up a lot of, we picked up a lot of growth, we noticed, in the last two years using the system.
I'm just going to ask a pointed question. Do you use drones?
We do not use drones.
Okay.
No drones. And then we continue our cyclical inspections to comply with the DOR guidelines, and we've looked at over 1,000 homes this past year. So we're required to look at 10,000, I'm sorry, we're required to look at every home every 10 years, I should say. So in terms of the budget itself, I think this shows that pretty much it's a level services budget. The only, the increase that you're seeing is just in personnel. All of our expenses remained the same. And the biggest thing, I think, is our reval services, which is a combination of Nearmap and Pushpin, and we also use Vision Services to look at all of our data each year. And that is all I have.
So I do have a question. I've looked at the budget, and I do see that your postage and courier budget is flat. How do you do that with postage rates increasing?
I think, I don't really know. I think that maybe we have a little bit more in there cushion in case we have mailings for the senior means. So if we don't use it, then it just goes back into the general fund.
Are you relying more on non-mail, like digital, electronic communications that would reduce the need for mailed communications?
We still mail out all of our exemptions. We still mail, we're using the same, I would say, we do try and get the word out digitally, but I think the mail, it's just, it varies year to year, so it really depends. We have to mail our exemptions, they have to be physically received, so we can't electronically send those.
Got it. Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So the increase in the personnel, that's just a result of the steps and lanes for those positions?
Correct.
Okay. And the revaluation services, that's just a flat fee? Is that a license fee?
So that $45,000 is a combination of a bunch of things. So it's that Nearmap, Pushpin, our Vision that comes in and looks at our values each summer, and then...
So is that an annual service fee?
That's an annual fee, yep.
And that has remained constant?
Yes.
Or the same as last year?
It just increases a little each year.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Great. I just wanted to thank you publicly, this summer when there was legislation passed to help disabled veterans with motor vehicle excise tax exemption, your office was super helpful with getting letters out to everybody who might be eligible, and you did it within, you know, a couple days. So thank you for doing that very much. Very helpful, and very much appreciated.
Great.
I do want to add one more comment. At the beginning, you talked about you focus on efficient and courteous service.
Yes.
I will let you know that I've heard from several residents on the courtesy, how impressed they are, and so it's really very nice, so thank you.
Well, thank you. That's great to hear.
Tom, is there anything else you wanted to add?
I would have highlighted the efficient and courteous approach as well. Erin's office, led by Erin, is, that's their mantra down there. You know, we always talk about the clerk being the face of the town. If someone's going to come into Town Hall and generically, unless they're coming here for a purpose, for permitting or something, they're usually coming in to either meet with the assessor's office, or the clerk's office, or the treasurer's office, and sometimes the building department, but usually those three. And so often Erin and her team are the face of the town, so it's courteous, and we're very much appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the budget for the Treasurer Collector. Please, good to see you.
Good to see you. My name's Laurie Magna, and I'm going to present the budget for the Treasurer Collector's Office.
Can you, are you picking up on her mic? Okay, great.
Okay, so the first screen is showing basically what we do in the Treasurer Collector's Office. We're basically two offices with different roles, but they overlap, and we do work well, they do kind of overlap, so we work well together, having them together. They're basically governed by Mass. General Laws, and as you can see, the Treasurer Collector does most of the funding and money part of it, and the Collector does most of the billing. So our department is made up of six employees. I'm the Treasurer Collector, and we have an Assistant Treasurer, a Revenue Receipt Administrator, and three Tax Receipt Clerks. Four of us are full-time, and then we have two part-time employees. As you can see on this slide, we have been able to maintain our 99% collection rate, which is pretty easy to do in Hingham, but it still requires timely billing and just, you know, getting everything in properly, so. So our budget is, again, mostly personnel services. The largest part of our budget besides that would be postage and courier. We have to mail out lots of bills, and, oh, we mail the entire warrant for the Town, all the bill payments that go out and post it, well, the payroll, we don't mail as many checks anymore, but, so we're responsible for that in our budget, and that is also our biggest increase because of postal increases. And the other, the other part of our budget that has gone up pretty a lot is the print vendor has increased our budget for printing of bills. And then the meetings and seminars has increased because the Mass. Treasurer Collectors Association has increased their prices on the school, and we still have one person in my office, Mary Jane Deach, who is getting her certification, so she has to go, and then I have to go, not as much as her, but to just stay certified. So those prices all increased for us.
Right. So even though that's a material percentage increase in terms of its impact on the budget, it's still rather small. And I'm glad you picked up on the postage increase, which is the question I asked about the assessor's office. You have in fact noted that it's an increase, the postal service is continuing to raise the rates. When you do mailings, are they, at what rate do you mail primarily? First class or...
It is metered mail, and I actually don't know the exact, but it is less than a stamp.
Yep.
I would say it's, I'm pretty sure it's like 69 cents right now as opposed to 78, but I'm not positive on that.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Laurie, for all that you do in the presentation. In terms of the printing, is that the printing of bills and invoices?
Yes, it's the real estate, motor vehicle, boat bills that we mail out. Boat, real estate goes out twice a year, and boat once a year, and motor vehicle goes out throughout the year.
Yes, okay. And so we're working with the same vendor?
Yes, yes, we use Bill Trust.
Okay. Have the prices gone up by that percentage in general?
It does, it does seem like it's always 7%.
Okay. Across the industry. Okay, thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Thanks, Laurie. Appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, Laurie, thank you. Excellent presentation. Tom, was there anything you wanted to add?
Again, Laurie does a great job down there managing their Treasurer's Office. She's replacing Jean from a couple years ago now, so she's hit the ground running, and she's done a great job. I just wanted to note to the board, to your question, Liz, remember too, this is the departmental request. My budget will come later, and I will be scrutinizing a lot of these types of things with the Department Eds over the next month and a half, things like printing costs and the like. Now, these vendors are not easy to change because they're doing a very specific thing, but we do look at all of those in detail when I present my budget to you.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to community planning, and we have Emily Wentworth here.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thanks for your production. So quickly and high level, I'm just going to review the principal functions of the Community Planning Department broadly fall into two categories. The first is permitting. So we help the Board to administer those regulatory functions that they fill. You can see the list of what those permits are. In doing that, you know, there's a number of roles that staff plays that, you know, ranges from some of the notification postage-related questions that the statute requires us to do, but we also draft their legal decisions, we do site inspections during construction, et cetera. The other main function are planning services. These are familiar to you, I'm sure, from just, you know, this past year, there were a number of zoning articles that the Planning Board brought forward. Some of those were required by the state. Those are floodplain, groundwater protection, MBTA communities, multifamily zoning. Others were more locally initiated and seemed to fulfill our land use goals. So improved cell service and better utility of allowed building envelopes along the harbor. This upcoming year, you'll hear another batch, it will be a smaller batch. One is also state mandated and related to accessory dwelling units, but there are others that the Planning Board felt the community would benefit from. One in particular is a new exemption for properties affected by governmental takings, and that's in part driven because of the 3A corridor project. So, you know, that's high level of the zoning articles, a lot of those tend to be outgrowths of planning projects that we worked on. Last year, a couple of ours were related to that MBTA zoning, so there was an economic feasibility analysis completed, compliance modeling. We were able to do that with technical assistance or grant funds from the state primarily. This, this year, we've been more focused on the Harbor Master Plan, and that is going to be completed by the end of the month, so that's exciting. And then in coordination with ART, working on the Economic Development Strategic Plan also should be wrapped up in the first month or so. So that work is filled by a team of three, myself, the Senior Planner, Michael Silveira, and then pleased to announce that we have filled the Administrative Assistant role. Holla Shorestead joined us just about six weeks ago, so that's exciting news. You can see, you know, some of the metrics here, they've been relatively consistent in the last few years in terms of workload on, and I'm happy to answer questions about that, the majority of the permitting work that we've seen in recent years are site plan review applications that are triggered by land disturbance, so that takes up the most of the Planning Board's time. Key initiatives, I guess, you know, in addition to the planning projects that we're wrapping up, I do want to highlight that within the last, this current fiscal year, we have begun supporting the Community Preservation Committee, so a portion of the Administrative Assistant salary is actually funded through their administrative funds. I'm excited that we work with them. I think zoning is fun, but more people like to see, you know, the historic preservation, the conservation, affordable housing projects that they're able to support. So that's exciting in terms of...
Emily, I also think that zoning is exciting. Just letting you know.
Somebody asked me recently if I slept with a copy of the Bylaw underneath my pillow. I just walked around with it everywhere.
And you responded, "It is your pillow." It's not underneath it, okay.
Numbers, overall, you know, salaries have gone up, but other than that, proposing a $55 cut in the expenses overall, and I really just shifted around a couple of the lines to better reflect either, you know, most recent actual expenditures or projected expenditures. So that's, that's the budget.
To what extent is the budget funded by fees that are assessed on applicants?
It's not directly, so any fees just go into the general fund. I'd have to look and see what amount of fees that we collect. It's nowhere near what, you know, we're spending on salaries and the other statutory requirements like legal ads or public notices.
Okay.
Which we send by postcard, also try and save a little bit of money.
Yes. Bill, I'll turn to you.
The only question I've got, Emily, is the site plan reviews triggered by land disturbance, is that Crow Point?
A large amount of the residential ones, yes, are in Crow Point, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but we did that analysis recently. I want to guess it was somewhere around like 70% of those that we're seeing overall.
Because of the scale of the...
And the neighborhood has just kind of been ripe for redevelopment or expansion projects. In some ways, that's interesting because outside of, Crow Point is sewered, so they're not also having to put in, you know, a leaching field that would disturb more area, but we have seen a lot of redevelopment there.
Yeah. Well, I know you're very busy and appreciate how you do. Thank you.
Liz?
Thank you, Emily, for all you do and your team. Just a quick question about the clerical. So I know you said the Community Preservation Fund supports part of that, so this number here, does that represent the 20 hours?
That represents the 20. The other 15 are drawn from the admin line.
Okay, for CVC. Okay, excellent. Your comment about the permit fees and not covering, should that be more aligned? Is that something that, not that I'm suggesting increasing them, but is that a best practice, that that should be more aligned?
We could look at it. So right now, a site plan review application costs $500 just to apply. Our actual expenses for mailings, legal ads, don't approach that. It's the staff time that is exceeding what we're collecting. You know, subdivisions could range over $1,000 just to apply.
Okay.
So we periodically do an assessment of where other communities' fees are. My sense is that they're, you know, kind of aligned with what's industry standard, but happy to look at it again.
Okay. All right. Just curious, if maybe it's worth looking at the last time we did an assessment?
I think it was...
Just to understand?
Quite a long time ago.
Okay.
I have to follow up on that question.
Sure, please.
I remember the last couple of years, you've been saying we haven't seen a lot of subdivision applications coming in, obviously probably impacted by the economy. Have there been any in the past year? I can't think of any, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, gosh, it's amazing to me, I can't think of one. Vineyard Lane, which is up off of Gardner Street, at 261 Gardner Street?
Okay.
Is a four-lot subdivision, one house already existed, and I feel like we've had another one that was like a two-lot subdivision.
Off Gardner, too?
Ward Street was sort of, that was an effort of flex residential development and then divided through an A&R process, so it's the same net result, just the actual mechanism is a little bit different. Thank you.
I mean, when I was on the Planning Board years ago, there were a lot of subdivisions.
Oh, it was regular, yeah.
Yeah, we had a lot of subdivision work.
We are seeing the results of that now, right? So now we're on the other end, trying to close out subdivisions and navigate through a street acceptance policy. So it's not necessarily development of new ones, but it's interesting that it still requires a lot of administrative support or work.
Thank you. So I know that you've been spending a fair amount of time and effort working with ART in terms of our plan to get more economic growth. I don't know, ART, did you want to add anything to this presentation?
There's nothing to add to this presentation other than just to say that planning and economic development are intricately linked and certainly depend on Emily's wise counsel.
Right, yes. Emily, I know you've been actively involved there in doing things beyond what I see here. For example, you know, we've had a transition staff down in the historic departments... For example, you know, we've had a transition staff down in the historic departments and you've been working there. So, you've really contributed to the town and the department really supports the town. So, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have conservation. Shannon, good to see you.
Hi, good to see you. Shannon Palmer, I'm a conservation officer. Thank you for having me tonight. As many of you might know, our responsibility is to protect the community's natural resources and acquire land for conservation and passive recreation. Our other primary function is to administer and enforce the State Wetlands Protection Act as well as the local Hingham Wetlands Protection Bylaw. As part of those primary functions, some of the services we provide are reviewing and issuing permits for any work within the commission's jurisdiction, which includes any water bodies, river fronts, lands subject to coastal storm flowage, and anything within 100 feet of a resource area. We conduct site inspections, we monitor construction activities and ongoing projects, we respond to public inquiries. We also manage 1,000 acres of conservation land, which includes our hunting program. We're also involved in the development and implementation of long-range planning documents, such as the open space plan. We work with other boards and committees and commissions on, on projects, like Emily mentioned, the Route 3A project, the Harbor Resiliency Project, and the Harbor Master Plan. So, those are all things conservation is actively involved in, to have input in. Obviously, most of those projects are directly within a wetland resource area or within the vicinity. So, we have permitting authority. We also own land in some of those areas that we'll have direct input in. So, our department is myself, as well as two full-time, two full-time staff, my assistant, Sylvia Schuler, who's the assistant CEO. And I'm happy to say today, or yesterday, was our first day for our new administrative assistant, Natasha, we hired. She comes to us from the town of Marion, so we're very excited to have her. And she started yesterday and she's full-time as well. Some of the benchmarks for our department, obviously, our primary function, like I mentioned, is reviewing applications and those fluctuate depending on, you know, the year, the economy. Last year, we had 87 total applications and those include, you know, minor things that might be an administrative review to a large-scale project that would require a notice of intent. This year, we're on track to match probably last year and we have 40 to date. We have fees that we collect pursuant to the State Wetlands Protection Act, as well as our local bylaw fees. And those numbers for revenue, those are by fiscal year and there's a total of the state and the local fee, just so you know. So, this year, we're actually tracking a little bit higher than we have previous years. Some of the key initiatives for our department this coming year, the commission is really focused on updating our local wetland regulations. They haven't been updated in quite some time, with the exception of one of the sections on docks and piers. But there's just some inconsistencies and some improvements that we really want to do. So, you see that reflected in the budget request. That's our primary goal. We also want to continue to prioritize conservation property needs and maintenance requirements, evaluate CPC projects, land acquisition or trail projects. We need to update our open space plan. That hasn't been updated in quite some time. It's still in draft form. So, we really want to start working on that and then continue to improve our partnerships with other local groups and volunteers. And I'll jump over to the budget numbers. Our budget's pretty straightforward. We had the increases in the salaries, but just for the step increases and COLAs. The, the salary for the admin will actually go down. We just hired somebody, like I mentioned, that's actually at a lower step. So, we'll see another decrease there. And the expense accounts, I tried to keep pretty consistent. I did cut where I could for certain accounts, based on our actual numbers over the past couple of years. The number that I might jump onto is consultant services and that is for the update of the regulations. We would really like to utilize a professional consulting firm to help us with that update. And I tried to take from other accounts where I could to try to balance that out, but as you can see, we have an overall increase of 5%. But the other accounts are pretty, pretty straightforward. I can answer any questions that you might have.
What about the reduction in R and M grounds?
Yeah, that one's kind of tricky. We haven't really received any definitive numbers from them, from Hall, I should say. That account is really for the Straits Pond Title Gate and we really don't know exactly what work might be needed. The typical operation and maintenance is only about, you know, 5,000 to 7,000. We've been told that to expect additional work, we just haven't been giving anything definitive. So, I'm hoping that when I'm actually meeting with them the next couple of weeks, that we're able to utilize the funds that we had set aside for this year. We asked for 29,000 anticipating that work, hoping we'll have some clarity on if that's going to be used. So, next year, the 15 was really just kind of a projection of, an average where we might land.
Bill, if you have any, any questions?
No questions with Shannon. Thanks for how you're doing, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, Shannon. Great job. Just one question. I know you mentioned the consultant service for the wetland regulations. Is a consultant required for the open space and recreation plan?
It could be, depending on the amount of work that's required. That's probably not on our list for next year. But if we want to get it done quickly and efficiently, then that certainly would be helpful, yes.
Okay, more to come. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a set of model regulations out there that we could be using, I guess, as a benchmark to compare our regulations against?
There are. And like I said, we don't need a complete overhaul, but we have a really, you know, fundamentally sound set of regulations. It's just, there's just a lot of things that need to be updated, inconsistencies and definitions that need to be addressed. And that number is based on a ballpark figure I got from a consultant. It could be as low as 20. It could be a little higher. So, I'm hoping it, you know, falls in the lower end, obviously. But it, you know, and we can scale it back if we need to.
So, I mean, the town is very grateful for your work here. In many ways, you are, you know, you're protecting our natural resources and that's such an integral part of the town that we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks.
We now move on to land use and development. Oh, she's in, I was looking around, she's not on.
She's going to come a little bit later.
Then we will not move on to that. We move on to Public Works, Ashley. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, if you could just introduce yourselves for the record?
Ashley Sanford, the Assistant Superintendent for Hingham DPW.
Randy Sylvester, Superintendent, the DPW.
Randy.
Why?
So, just going over who we are. The Public Works, we have the engineering, fleet maintenance, highway, and tree and park in this part of our budget process. In our fleet maintenance, we have over 49 vehicles, 80 different pieces of equipment when it comes to like our maintenance, all the great things we have to keep the streets good here. And we have a full-time supervisor, two mechanics and a craftsman, craftsmen in that position.
Craftspersons.
In our highway division, we have our supervisor and we have two foremen positions. One of them is still vacant right now. Eight operators, and I'm glad to say we did hire someone, so we only have two more vacant positions in our highway division. They're in charge of over 140 miles of public roads, 60 miles of walkways, 100 miles of drain lines, 10,000 drainage structures throughout the town, where they also do maintenance around the ponds and vegetation throughout the town, our streets, line of sites and everything. And we have our tree and park division, where we have our supervisor, two foremen, five aerial bucket operators, a part-time labor, and we still have two open positions there. We tried filling that and still working on it. They're responsible for over 110 parks and fields throughout the town, 25 traffic islands, 1,000 acres of open space, 10,000 public shade trees, and 380 removals and 300 and, 3,300 prunings a year. And then, well, our transfer station's separate. So, yeah, there's our breakdown of our department. And I kind of just went over all that, everything that we have in our department. And we go over our, our key initiatives of our MS4 stormwater permit compliance is one thing that we're been working on with making sure that a lot of our drainage and street drains and everything like that are up to date around town, which is like a lot of work with all the outfalls and everything to make sure that those all stay clear and to keep us up to date with testing and all the new regulations that are being put into place with stormwater permits. Educating the public. We're going to, the transfer station fees, we wanted to look into that this year, doing comparisons with towns around and see where we could get some more wiggle in there. So, onto our budget. So, when it comes to personal services, it's just the standard increases, for step increases and COLA, all of that, bone stipends. When it comes to all of our regular expenses, the only increases that we really have are our utility increases, where electric, electricity's gone up, there's going to be a 6% increase there. So, we kind of have an estimate on doing that with going over our usage of the past three years. Same with vehicle fuel. We're still waiting on numbers like that, so we just did an estimate on what we've used and what the cost is and trying to adjust around there. The same with natural gas when it comes to heating. So, just kind of like the increases of seeing where we're projecting them to kind of be at. Other than that, everything's basically the same. The only thing that we are actually asking to increase is our drainage budget because of the, all the new MS4 regulations and the updates that we're still trying to do to keep us in compliance. And so, we're looking for an increase there.
Want to just roll right into the transfer station and then we can go?
Sure.
Can I just ask a quick question? Where was the drainage? What line is that?
It is...
It's in the other.
In the other, at the bottom. It's like the second to last one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll ask questions on both of them.
So, as transfer station, we have one supervisor, a foreman, five heavy equipment operators, and a part-time swap shop coordinator. We were able, we only have one vacant position there now. We were aware of to fill one of our empty positions with a new heavy equipment operator, which is great. Over there, we're just doing a lot of keeping up with the cap and the swale for the transfer station. Our personnel services, it's just the regular increases for the step increases and longevity. For that, we are asking for an increase for the insect and rodent control because that has been an issue, that we're having to put a lot more effort into.
Needs to be addressed.
Yes.
It's ongoing.
It's an ongoing issue, yeah. And then, a couple of other things that we are asking for increases on, but we have decreases in other, other lines, is wire supplies. That's for doing all our bailing and everything for the recycling. And scale fees, it's just the costs are just gradually stepping up anyways with the increase in times. The cost of recycling and our trash hauling alone is going up. We are about to be getting ready for negotiation for the new contract for trash.
CMAS.
CMAS. And they, but everything's kind of consistently going up with everything, including the cost of recycling, where it used to, we'd not get charged, the hauling fees, we're getting charged a lot for hauling fees and stuff now, which does add a lot to our budget.
It probably tripled in the last three years. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, thank you. Early on in the presentation, Tom talked about other departments that were the face of the town as people came into town hall. In many ways, you are the face of the town outside of town hall. This is, people interact with you, they're aware, whether or not they come and say hello, they know you're there, they know what you're doing. And so, it's really important, I mean, this is such a vital aspect of, of town operations. Some of the things that I see in the budget, you know, Randy talked to us two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, in terms of what he saw, in terms of increases in fees associated with recycling. And so, Randy, I really appreciate the guidance that you've given us and sort of pointing out what we need to address over, over the years. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, you know, the big issue at least in, on the transfer station is, is the rodent control. So, I'm glad to see that we've, we've got that as an important budget item. And, and I know you're doing your best to manage all the other costs. Bill?
Yeah, a couple of different questions. Thank you both. So, first of all, and the key initiative is, you had recycling regulation changes. What, briefly, can you go over what the changes, changes are coming with recycling?
Okay. That was really, he almost went and then he, it was really well played.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Go ahead, Randy.
Because the recycling industry is changing so much, some of the, what we're going to do is we're putting in a new baler to bail plastics. And whatever other commodities, so we might have to change the rules, the rules, not necessarily the regulations, to coincide with that. So, like milk jugs, we can get a lot of money back to that. It's like $500 a ton right now. So, I, we bought a baler through the RDP funds, the recycling dividend program through the DEP, and we're just trying to get it up and running now. So, we'll have to separate the plastics, the milk jugs and that type of plastic, so we can bail that separately and we'll get, we'll get a return on that. Where now, we're paying like $15 a ton and we're giving that to our recycler, where he breaks apart the bailes and gets the profits from it.
Okay, great. Thank you. The Hingham app, how's that, how's that working out? Obviously, we've had it now maybe about a year and a half, maybe. Are we seeing residents using it? Have residents been happy with it? I haven't heard a lot of feedback either way on it, but glad we have it. But what's been your experience with it?
We get a good amount of service requests through it. I think people do enjoy the interaction, being able to have back and forth, where the girls and the officer are able to quickly answer them and then get it out to the different departments, depending on what their requests are.
And the resident gets updates on it, right? Like, so, a resident reports a pothole on Lincoln Street. They get updates about, hey, it's been filled, we're working on it.
We respond to them.
Every 24 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
In 24 hours and letting them know, so then they know we have somebody on it and that the work's getting done that they're asking.
Excellent, excellent. Obviously, snow, I saw the signs of snow and ice, flowers needed, how are we doing with that?
We have about half the contractors that we normally have.
Really? Okay, yeah.
There's not a lot, not a lot of contractors wanting to do it anymore, I guess.
Yeah, a lot of contractors have sold their equipment because of the weather change.
Well, the mild winters we've had, right?
Mild winters.
Like 60 degrees today, right? In December.
And they're not, they're not signing up.
Yeah.
So...
Obviously, sitting, sitting in this seat, snow and ice and legal are two budgets we have to keep an eye on because of the potential costs. Every year, Randy, you kind of remind me of this, but can you, people, for people watching at home, what is the cost of, let's say, a moderate snowstorm, five, four, five hours? Is it 250?
Um...
Three hundred?
I would say that.
About three hundred thousand dollars, like a five-hour snowstorm?
Yes.
So, when we get one of those...
That's all the sand and you, all the contractors and I, and my...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. If we can't get the plow drivers contracted, would that mean more overtime costs?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right. Joe talked a little about rodent control measures, I know you're working with Susan Sarni on that, so thank you for that. I spoke with her last week about that, she said she had some ideas, so hopefully, we can, you know, we can, hopefully, that will, those will help the situation when she comes back and meets with you. Wanted to give you, you and your department and your staff, a huge thank you for, over the years, the can deposit program that you run up there. I've used that with my Boy Scout troops, with different teams I've coached, it's a fantastic program. For those that don't know it, the DPW runs a program where you can sign up to receive a week's worth of the, of the proceeds of cans that are recycled, and usually for children's groups or teams in town, and then the group or the organization has to commit to about twenty-five dollars of community service. So, you know, my Boy Scout troop would often do work at Bearcove Park, or some of my teams would do work in the community picking up trash, and it's a wonderful program, and I don't think I've ever publicly stated my thanks for you doing that, but it's been great.
We earn about twenty-six thousand dollars a year.
It's, it, it really made the difference with some of these teams and some of these organizations I've been involved with, and it's just, it's a wonderful program. And it also gets the kids doing community service work on the backend of it, which is great. And lastly, I know, I know you're not, still have a couple of weeks left with us, but I know this is going to be your last budget cycle, so let me be the first of many times, I'm going to be thanking you for your many years of dedicated service to our town, Randy has wanted to acknowledge that tonight and appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Liz?
All right, yes, thank you, Randy, I didn't know we were going to go there, but congratulations. Can you just talk a little bit more about the drainage services? Is that related to the stormwater?
Uh, yes, so...
Permit compliance, is that what that is?
Uh, yeah, so, it's part of the MS four permit that we have. The, they have a new regulation, so we have to start doing testing, dry testing and wet testing that have to come into play, and that each time those tests, the costs have like gone up drastically, so it used to be like five hundred dollars, and now it's like almost a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Each time that we have to do those tests at different outfalls, so that's like one of the big parts of it. And then, we're just, the, developing like different ways to clear out systems and like making sure that all those things, and checking old pipes that we have throughout the town, and rebuilding all those catch basins and everything throughout to make sure that we don't have the flooding.
Okay, excellent.
There's many facets to the stormwater program, the MS four program. We have to maintain, we have to do regular maintenance on things, like the street, the street, street, sweep the streets. And catch basin cleanings, then we have to store them and get rid of them properly and all that, you know, that's all paperwork for us. We pay all that by the ton, and we try to keep it covered, so we pay less money, we don't want to paper what. There's the IDDE program, illicit discharge elimination program, where we, that's part of the testing, when we get these tests, it'll tell us if there's certain parameters in the, in the, in the water, where it shows that there's an illegal connect, connection to it, such as a washing machine drain or some other type, and then we have to investigate that. Now, we haven't had many, but we have had some, and we've had to go to the homeowner and tell them that we're going to have to disconnect it and eliminate it, so...
Okay. Okay.
That gets costly.
Yes. Okay, and then the utilities, obviously, those are mostly out of our control. Do these, do all of, all of the budgets reflecting the increases from HMLP?
Yes.
All right, and I know you spoke about a few, I think, five different vacancies, so are we aggressively trying to...
We are. We've been getting resumes in, and we've been actively doing interviews.
Great.
And so, we have been, like, we made some job offers, and then, some of them, they've got positions in other towns or things like that, so we're still, we're reposting and stuff like that right now, trying to get some more guys in.
Okay. Okay. Are you seeing kind of consistent issues with that, like...
Honestly, the only, like, kind of issue is, is like, a lot of people, they'll come from like private things, and then they say, oh, that much money.
Okay.
Look at the benefits. Try to sell it.
Yeah.
But, yeah. So, it's like, we got two young guys who came in, which is great, they're in their twenties, so hopefully, goes in for the long haul. And then, we had another gentleman up at the transfer station, has a lot of experience with truck driving and heavy equipment, and so he'll be doing great.
Excellent, good, well, thank you for all you do for the town, thank you for the presentation.
One other question, which is, I know, one of Randy's favorite topics, which is requests that residents have made for composting. And first, there was a time, and I don't know if it's still continuing, where residents can go to DPW's offices and buy for like five bucks, whatever, very nominal charge, the, the, so they can do composting at home? Are you still making that available?
Yes, so that, so the, the actual units themselves cost seventy-five dollars or more, I don't know the actual cost, no, but they were seventy-five dollars, and we have to sell them for twenty-five dollars.
Right, okay.
And then, we'll get an RDP point, which contributes, shows up as money in our grant funding.
And then, I know there's been some requests to have composting drop-offs either at the transfer station or at other locations. Are you continuing to get those requests?
Greener Cleaner Hingham, I've had a couple of meetings with them, I went to one of their committee meetings, and they, they really like love the idea, but obviously, with the rodent issue that we are currently dealing with, it's not exactly ideal for us to now bring food.
Right.
So, you know, I've talked to them of maybe looking for some other locations or other ideas to be able to do it, or maybe just doing a bigger push for residents to do their own in-home service through the company that they're suggesting. And then, that way, we don't have to worry about having a location.
Right.
Whereas, if a resident wants to do the composting, they can just have the barrel at their house and it gets taken away.
Yeah, one of the concerns, though, I've heard is that, in fact, all of a sudden, you've got a lot of trucks going through town, picking up those barrels.
So, the meeting that we went to with Social Recycling last week, they just do, it's a two-week, two times a week pickup, and they're already like, they're already in town and in the surrounding areas, so I don't think it'd be that much more of a truck situation in town.
So, it sounds like it's something that can be coordinated.
Yeah.
Great. Yes, sir.
I do have one thing to say about...
I knew you would.
And I'm all for composting, we do the leaves and grass and all that stuff, but food waste up at the transfer station, even talking with the composting company that does the pickups, they even had rodent problems at their facility, and we talked to them extensively about it, and they took special measures, which I don't think the town could afford, and one of them was like housing the compost area. We don't have the area to begin with, with the capping, where we're composting on the cap anyway. So, I, I personally think it's not a good idea to do it at the transfer station, although I think it's great that they, that they can have another company take it, and they go out to a field somewhere where it's wide open and put it in field where they can turn it over and do it properly.
Great.
We just don't have that ability.
And one other question about the transfer station, do you still make available, I don't know if it's the salt or the sand that people can, can bring back to their residents for snow, snow and ice purposes? And what, where do they get that?
They'll be up on the composting area, there's a, there's a bin that we put salt and sand in, and we'll re-replenish it as needed.
That's a, I mean, it's a great service that I think, at least the residents I've spoken to had no idea that was available, so, so, thank you.
I get it every year, so I'll take you up there.
Okay.
Bring my shovel with me and...
Okay. Okay, appreciate your presentation, this will not be the last time you leave before the select board, Randy, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
We'll see you.
We'll see.
We'll come to you.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we can now go back to land use and development. Jennifer, if you can just introduce yourself and we'll proceed.
All right. Hello, my name is Jennifer Orem, I'm the zoning administrator and senior planner. My department is the Land Use and Development. Thank you for letting me come later, I had a conflict with the zoning board, so had a record setting meeting. So...
And your priority was the correct priority to go in there, so, thank you, okay.
So, our department is staffed by two people, myself, which is the zoning administrator, and a land use coordinator, whose name is Donna Thompson. We support three different boards, two boards and one trust. Our key initiatives for the coming year and for the past year is to provide support for the zoning board, we process, preparing the board's applications, prepare for their meetings, drafting decisions, et cetera, once we get through those public hearings. We have a lot of walk-in traffic from residents and builders and contractors that come in to ask what they can do with the properties in town, and we meet with all of them and give them ideas and then, you know, request that if they're going to try to do more, we always recommend getting professional services as well. Another thing that we do is we review zoning building applications that come in from the building department, signs, different projects, uses, and we review those and make sure that they're zoning compliant. Through that filter, we sometimes catch items that need to go to the board or need some adjustments to their building permit, so that's one of the, I enjoy that process. This past year, we reviewed about one hundred permits for that. The department also supports the Affordable Housing Trust. The trust is comprised of seven members, they, we meet monthly, and through them, we work to develop and preserve affordable housing for the town. This past calendar year, we brought and sold on four new units onto the SHI. We're about to complete another one, we'll be back before you regarding the LA U-Lip application for a condo, that contract's up January fifteenth, it's, it's close to done, so we'll be going for a lottery in that, in the first quarter, and it's one of our fastest turnarounds, which has been a great process for us, and that, so that's exciting. And we're hoping to add another three units to the SHI in the coming year. Presently, we're about at, we're over the ten percent still, we have over a thousand units on the SHI, but we're always looking to add more. The final group that we support is the Lincoln School Apartments, which is a board of managers, which supports the Lincoln School Apartments, which is a sixty-unit complex within town for low-income seniors and disabled peoples, that is also on the SHI, and we support that board on a monthly basis, help them with their budget, coming up with ideas to make capital improvements to both outside and inside, and we work with the residents quite a bit now, sort of providing them support, so they know they have a, someone to call outside the building, which we've made a lot of good friends and we enjoy them. So, the budget for us is if you could, everything as far as the budget itself is still is, it is level funded, what we did do is I moved some items around. Annually, we see that our postage budget and our office supply budget goes into the red, and though we're bottom line, it just seems more transparent to change those funds around to show and take it out of things that we've historically not spent, but it is good because we can't predict how many applications we have, and that money for all of those processes to get those applications out, particularly for the zoning board, comes out of this budget. So, for example, last fiscal year, we had eleven applications, and this year, we had thirty. So, did we not have that comfort to cover all of that? Then, we would have been in the red, so it, you know, it works out well to keep that, plus, we never know, we do want to look into purchasing a new legal binder book that we need, and so, and we have some funds for that. And that's really, in a nutshell.
How are variance applications this year? Are you getting any?
We have had several people want to come in and apply, and we review them and, and walk them through the process, and a couple of them would come in and then withdraw when they realized it wasn't going to. We have only granted one, it was a very unique case, and it was, it was very interesting, and that was most recent, but other than that, it's the only variance we granted, I think, since I've been here, in the last three years.
Great. Bill?
ADU applications.
So, we've had a lot of interest, particularly in the last year, we did, I think, six ADU special permit, we have about nineteen, or twenty-two in town. We have recertified twenty-one, however, with the new law, they aren't in place, we know it's there, and we're working with people who are interested, but waiting for the new regulations to be adopted.
Are the twenty-one detached structures or attached?
No, mostly attached, we only have, I think, two detached.
Two detached.
Because, because the detached came in two years ago at town meeting.
Yeah.
So, we've only had, it's, we've only had the two, a lot of people just attach them, use their garage.
Yeah.
We have one that's going to be constructed in Crow Point that we just approved, and another one that was an existing structure.
Great, thank you.
Liz?
Thank you for the presentation and all that you do for Affordable Housing Trust and Lincoln School. In terms of postage and advertising, if it's, if it's associated with the affordable housing, that money comes out of the trust budget, right?
Correct. So, right, so that trust, the budget for the trust is in reference there.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
I think that's it, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I believe the next and last budget request concerns legal services.
Sure.
Mr. Mayo?
So, our legal team consists of four, four categories, litigation, which comprises about thirty-five percent of our total legal budget, with real estate, which is about twenty-nine percent, general counsel, about twenty-five percent, and our personnel costs, our labor counsel is about eleven percent. We're proposing to level fund that from last year, and remember, this is one of those budgets, it's very, very difficult to anticipate, because things come up during the year that cost money, or don't come up this year, that did last year, and we're saving money, so it's very difficult to get this one accurate, so this is one of those where we're going to level fund it this year, and any, if, if there is an overage needed, that would come from the reserve fund transfer process through the advisory committee. We are proposing to level fund this budget this year.
Got it. Bill?
Level fund, sounds good to me, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Tom, I know you spend a lot of time managing this, and, and in many ways, you, it's difficult to anticipate legal issues, because some you can plan for, but some just are sprung on us. So, I appreciate your efforts in managing this budget.
Thank you, we have an amazing team of lawyers, Susan Murphy, our real estate counsel, and John Coffin, our general counsel, of course, Kevin Feeley's our labor attorney, and Kerry Ryan is our litigator, and they're just incredible, we're very lucky to have all of them.
Absolutely, great. Okay, that concludes our budget requests for this meeting. And next item on our agenda will be a update on the Veterans Council activities. Who's going to make that presentation? Okay, if you can, please introduce yourselves for the record.
Absolutely, good evening, everybody, my name is Matthew Sexton, I am the chair of the Hingham Veterans Council. With me is Tom Hoffman, serving on the council, and with us also in the room, not able to sit up here, Evan Gelfen, member of the council, Bill Leonard, a member of, member of the council, and newly minted member as of today, Peter Schnor, who wasn't able to be with us this evening.
So, let me just stop you there, how many members are on the council?
So, with the new appointment today, we now have five members on the council.
Do we have a quorum here?
Looks like we do.
So...
Looks like we do, I don't know if they're, did you post for this? I don't know if you did.
You're coming from a meeting, right?
Right.
Coming from a...
So, you've not adjourned your meeting?
We have not adjourned.
Okay, so, this is a continuation of a publicly noted meeting.
So, he may want to adopt the language.
Well, they've already opened their meeting, so they don't need to, you're good. Okay, so, I just want to make sure we've dotted that I, please, continue.
Thank you very much. So, first and foremost, I just want to say that the... Thank you very much. So, first and foremost, I just want to say that the Veterans Council, working with Keith German, has had incredible support from the town for the myriad of events that we engage in throughout the year. And, you know, our expectation is that support will only grow over time. And what we want to do today is just highlight some of the significant events that we engage in from a council perspective throughout the year. So, the first being the annual replacement of flags at veterans' graves in May of each year. So, there are six cemeteries throughout Hingham that comprise about 3,600 veteran individual graves. And we have wonderful partnerships with SNAP, Hingham Police Department, and just the community at large that comes out and helps us replace each one of those flags and any damaged metal stanchions on an annual basis. So, what that really does is it allows us to clean and beautify each one of those veterans' graves on an annual basis and make them sort of ready for inspection at any time. So, we get great support from the community there to move through all six of those sites annually. So, moving on to the 50 Flags program?
Sure. You might wonder why is the Veterans Council involved with 50 Flags? Well, 50 Flags, of course, is the major fundraiser for the Hingham Parade. It's hard for me to believe, but we got the report recently in a committee. This year's parade costs $66,000. And a lot of, most residents don't understand that it's all privately fundraised. Well, one of the programs is 50 Flags. And the way that ties in is that obviously, people can rent the flags either for, for two weeks. They can rent 25 flags for $65 or 50 flags for $100. Where do we get the flags? Well, we have to buy them. But then, what we're doing is we're trying to get at least three or four uses out of the flags. Well, what we found, and I want to do a shout out to Scott McMillan, because Scott, when the flags are removed in May from all the graves, the sticks are in good shape because they're in a metal stanchion. The flags are tattered. The 50 Flags program, and Liz will tell you because she coordinated for the high school football team this year, we get a lot of broken sticks, but we have perfectly good flags. So, what's going to happen in January in the basement of the G R, the G A R Hall, we're going to have a bunch of high school students that need community service hours, and they're going to learn how to restaple flags on the poles. And we, we're going to have a, we have about 22,000 flags in storage there now. So, good tie-in. And of course, Scott and American Legion folks have been very helpful there as well. This past year, not Feds Council related, our numbers were down slightly. In 2023, we set a record. We raised $37,500. 20% of that went to the groups that helped install to their programs. This year, we dropped down to $32,500. We think what happened was more people moved from the $100 down to the $65, and then because of the way the Fourth of July fell this past year, a lot of people went away, and they didn't even bother ordering flags. So.
Great. So, the next item, here's really a highlight for me personally, but I think for the town in general, right, is our annual Veterans Day ceremony here, held here at Town Hall. You know, we've been putting on the veterans' breakfast beforehand for a number of years now. Catered meal, coffee services, historical aspect as well, support from the High School Hingham Veterans Appreciation Club. We also had first-year participation from the Junior Veterans Appreciations Club, which was formed frankly with my daughter and a few other of her classmates at Foster Elementary. So, it's great to have them come out and be involved in the Veterans Day celebration. But we had an unbelievable turnout this year for the breakfast. We had over 80 veterans and their families pass through the breakfast before attending the ceremony. And if you were there, the ceremony had just incredible attendance. I think we had over 300 people in total in the auditorium for the formal presentation, which, you know, again, is just a testament to the support that we get from the town for these types of events. And then finally, leading up to the Veterans Day weekend, there were a number of events held at the elementary schools around town. And, you know, I was able to attend at Foster. I know that a few other of our council members attended throughout town as well as, as well as Keith German. So, again, just really a holistic experience around Veterans Day weekend, which, which was an incredible success. And we anticipate, you know, executing the same program of events next year.
Next item on there, number four, the Soldiers Care Package is just over a year ago, there was an announcement that went on on Facebook, Gretchen Amanti put out, that they were looking for funds to help support the Soldiers Care Package program, which frankly, I didn't even know existed. And last year was the 20th year. It started at the Baptist Church. And so, we got involved with that. We rallied up some financial support they needed, and we found out what it was all about. And then, all of a sudden, I said, what a great idea because I'm on the SNAP board. Why don't we get the SNAP kids involved with the Girl Scouts, and I'll package these things up? So, we did it last year. And then, this year, Joy, who had run the program, passed away. And so, several of the women that were involved with the project from the church kept it going. And so, literally right after the Veterans Day ceremony ended at Town Hall, some of us walked across the Girl Scout house. And it's amazing how much candy from Halloween was donated in this town. We filled, I think it was 86 boxes that got shipped off to active-duty military that are from Hingham. And I'm going to do a shout out now that we've tried to develop a list and find as many people as we can. And so, anybody that's watching tonight, if you get ahold of the Veterans' Office and just say, hey, have you considered Joe Jones is in the Navy or in the Army, and here's where they're stationed, we'll make sure we get care packages out. We got some great notes back from some of the folks that are serving. There was so much candy left over that they ended up making another 320 small bags of candy that flipped into point number five up on here. But I think this was the ninth year we did veterans' gift bags. And again, it's a program, a community service program, a SNAP. We tied it in with the Soldiers Care Package folks. We have the Girl Scouts involved. We have the High School Veterans Appreciation Group involved. We have some young men from Hingham that attend B C High that are trying to start a vets group there. And we put together 160 bags. We had some great sponsors. Each bag has about $75 worth of personal care products, gloves, hats, mittens. We worked out a deal with Victor Kowalo, who's a franchisee of Dunkin' Donuts on gift cards. And this is what's shocking to me. We have 24 veterans or their widows living in Hingham at the poverty level or below that need, need assistance. They get a gift bag. There were another 24 in the towns of Hall and Cohasset. That's 48. The other 112 bags I trucked into Boston to the New England Center at Home for Veterans on Court Street. The president of that is Andy McCauley, Hingham's own. So, great guy. But it's a great program for the kids to get involved. They have a lot of fun putting it together, and it makes a lot of veterans happy. And then, last but not least, on Service Project, this past Saturday, we did Reefs Across America. Now, Matt mentioned, we have 3,600 veterans' graves in town. And we were talking about it at our meeting earlier, we'd love to be able to put a wreath at every grave. But it would cost about $41,000 for those wreaths. So, it's tough enough raising the money to do a rotational. So, this past Saturday, we did 1,050 wreaths laid at St. Paul Cemetery. And then, we had about 30 wreaths left over that you went over to Fort Hill?
That's right.
Okay. Last year, we did High Street and Fort Hill. Next year, we're going to rotate through and do Liberty Plain. Let me remember. Liberty Plain, Hingham Center, and Old Ship. And that, that will be the second Saturday in December. So, another project combining SNAP, oh, and the Daughters of the American Revolution. They're a big help. They're a sponsor, and they make great cookies for everybody. Leaves us to number seven. Should I go to number seven?
Please do.
Okay. I'd like to introduce John Buckley and his son, Henry. And do you want me to speak on Henry's idea? Or does Henry want to speak?
Well, I.
So, don't, if, if you could just come up here and just introduce yourselves so that people who are watching online can actually see and hear you.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you. Special thanks to the Veterans Council for putting this, you know, very, for taking this upon themselves. I had an idea. My grandfather is a Purple Heart recipient, a World War II veteran, and something he was very proud of. And I, you know, if you drive to Boston, you know, other towns, you'll see, you might see signs that, you know, say, Purple Heart Community. So, I, and I realized Hingham didn't, didn't participate in that program. So, I wrote to V S O, Keith German, a probably in May. And of course, a busy time for Veteran Services Department. And over time, it, it got lost on me, and I apologize for that. But the Veterans Council, at the petition of my father, reopened my idea. And they have worked to research information about getting signs and making Hingham a Purple Heart Community. And I'm very thankful for that. And I hope that at one point, maybe today, the council will issue a proclamation making Hingham a Purple Heart Community.
Could you explain what, what it means to be a Purple Heart Community?
Sure. So, it's, it's, so, Purple Heart Communities are on the Purple Heart Trail, done by the Military Order of the Purple Heart. I'm a member of their auxiliary, being a family member of a recipient. So, I believe the nearest chapter is in Chickapi. So, it's a, it's a little far away. But a town proclaims themselves to be a Purple Heart Community. Part of that means just rededicating their commitment to not, not just Purple Heart recipients, but for all veterans, disabled veterans. And it's, you know, the signs show the community's dedication. And it's not just about the signs either. You know, veterans are, you know, Hingham, since, you know, my father's a veteran. I've grown up around veterans. And, you know, I know how strong Hingham's dedication to veterans is. And making this proclamation solidifies that. And it, it's just pretty much a show of support.
And what does it mean to be a Purple Heart recipient?
Purple Heart, so, you are given the Purple Heart if you are wounded in combat. And that's about as simple as it is. Unfortunately, people with PTSD and other mental disorders are not given the Purple Heart. I just wanted to make a point of that. But it's for combat injuries.
And to be a Purple Heart Community, you need to have residents in your town who, who are Purple Heart recipients?
That's correct. And I, I'm sure the Veterans Council is. I'm not aware of any right now. Our eligibility comes, as far as I know, from my grandfather, who was a Hingham resident at the time of his death. Lived in Weymouth most of his life. And, yeah.
We have research on that. We do have.
We have, we have, we have, we have plenty of.
So, I think you began your comments by noting how Hingham is such a strong community and supporter of veterans. And you are very accurate. This town, this board are absolutely behind you on that. So, so, thank you for your presentation.
All right. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to point out that John Buckley is a Coast Guard veteran. We've got another Coast Guard veteran I'm sitting next to, Coast Guard Academy grad. And the reason I'm nervous, my father was a Merchant Marine captain. They got, they got regulated by the Coasties. That's right. But where we're at on the proclamation request for becoming a Purple Heart Community, if we could go to the next slide, we identified roadways entering into Hingham, mostly major ones. There's 11 of them. And in doing a little homework, I talked to Randy Sylvester, and he mentioned, you know, you don't even think about this when you're driving on the roads. The first four that are listed are Hingham roads, and the rest are all taken care of by the state. So, he said, you know, you're going to have to talk to Mass Department of Transportation. So, we, we connected with Mike Murphy of Senator Connor's office, and he said he will run interference. As soon as you get the proclamation, they'll get it all worked out. So, I guess the proclamation process, Tom and I have talked about, it's being worked on. Not going to be a vote. We're not requesting a vote tonight. We just want to get the process going through. The gentleman from the Chickapi chapter, I guess, will be involved and come to another meeting and make the proclamation. Once that happens, in the Veterans Assistance Fund, there are sufficient dollars that we can buy the 11 signs. The signs are manufactured the same place that we buy the flags. And I tell the kids, the high school kids, to put in the 50 flags. I never want them in position to be making those flags or those signs. Because they go, what is it, in China? And I go, no, Mass Correctional Industries out at MCI Shirley. Stay away. But that's where we're at, and we're ready to go. And I think there's a photo up there, should give you an idea what it would look like. I took this picture entering, not the tree, right there. So, entering Milton, that's Route 28 North in Milton. You can see the Purple Heart sign down.
Yes.
Just to give you an idea. So, we're hoping by the first quarter of next year, we got this up and running.
This is an excellent presentation. And I know you hear all the time that we say to veterans, thank you for your service. But it's more than that. It's for your ongoing service to the town. And to honor your, your compatriots. So, we really appreciate it. I'll begin with Bill. If you have any, any comments or questions?
Yeah, sure. So, a couple of things. First of all, Matt, thank you so much for your leadership. Half of your energy is fantastic. Your passion for the stuff is great. I mean, the activities went over are just wonderful. Obviously, I've volunteered a couple of them myself. And what your leadership half of you with some of these community service events are fantastic. So, thank you for that. I was a former Veterans Council member. I loved every minute of it. Wonderful, wonderful board. Does a lot of, love for the town, even doing more now than when I was on it. And Henry, John, thanks so much for putting this forward. Hugely in support of it. I think this is something that, you know, we should probably be able to do pretty quickly. Tom, I know you, you might have some updates on what needs to happen between now and maybe January meeting where we can get this done?
That's right. I spoke with the commander today out in Chickapi, and there's a process in place. He and I communicated. We're moving that forward. He expects that it wouldn't take long to get the response back from the National Board, at which point, he would come here and with the Veterans Council, present the concept to the board for a proclamation to be adopted, and thereby making us, in fact, a Purple Heart Community. And like they said, there's signs. We could put them where we want to. So, and we'd be on a national register.
So, he has to attend a meeting, and he doesn't.
He has to. He likes to. He wants to.
Okay. Come all the way from Chickapi.
Forty-five minutes today.
Fantastic. Great. Well, I've always loved seeing the signs, and I always thought, why don't we, why don't we want? And let's do it.
Great. Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Henry and John, for bringing this forward and your family's service. Thank you, Matt, for your leadership and the Veterans Council. And no one can connect people for good like Coffee Cat. It's absolutely amazing. So, thank you. This presentation is, is just a nice reminder of awesome things that are happening in this town and the support for our veterans. I am thrilled to support this. I also have been waiting for this to be brought forward. So, excited and enthusiastic to move it along as quickly as possible.
So, we will look for it on upcoming agenda so we can proceed. Any members of the public with any comments? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Happy holidays.
Okay, next item on our agenda is an update for the Public Safety Facility. Bob?
Hello. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bob Garrity, the chairman of the Public Safety Building Committee. I have Sean Schmigl, who's the designers representative, who can provide us with an update. And then, we could get into a number of items that we are here to see you on too.
Yes.
Besides the update, we have two change audits that exceed the $50,000 amount. And we can talk about that. We've made, my committee has made a recommendation that they be approved. We also have two changes to contract amendments, not a change audit, but contract amendments with the O P M, as well as K B A, the designer, for various portions of the work. So, without further ado, how about if we turn it over? So without further ado, how about if we turn it over to you, Sean, and you can give us a quick update on where we're at?
Sure, I can give a brief update. We're probably about 75% through construction. Anticipate to be substantially complete by middle of April. So really, we're, I'm sure you're driving by it most days, if not every day. So you're seeing the progress. You'll start seeing more of the metal panels, more of the exterior, the finish, exterior finishes of the building going up, which will be the last pieces of the exterior. And then on the inside, mechanical systems are being finalized and completed, and finishes are going in. So starting from the first floor, going the way up, drywall, paints going in, tile finishes are going in. So it's definitely progressing quite nicely. And like I said, you know, in the next three to four months, it'll be substantially complete. So we're going to start working in, working through, getting owners' provided items installed, furniture, some fixtures, and so forth. So some of those items we'll be talking about further tonight. But again, things are going very well. You know, with the nice weather we've been having, it's been, it's been great for the contracts to get the items completed on time as well. So again, I'll get into more detail if you have any specific questions, but things are moving nicely so far.
So I just have a general question. You've used the phrase "substantially complete" a couple of times, which is a term of art that an architect uses that they sign, you know, that it's substantial complete. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, so substantially complete means that the town of Hingham can take ownership of the property. You know, not necessarily occupiable by the police and fire departments, but it's the opportunity when warranties start for construct, or at the end of construction for mechanical systems, electrical systems, lighting systems. And then, you know, depending on what the system may be, but you know, it's a five-year warranty, two-year warranty, and so forth. And then that's typically when, like I said, owner-provided vendors come in and install furniture, install AD equipment. You know, the town IT department will come in and do networking, server, server work, stuff like that. So that's really when the town can take ownership.
Right. So end of April, sometime in April is when we can expect to receive a certificate of substantial completion from the architect?
That is correct.
Got it. Okay.
Right. You're right. In the terms, the kind of fine, there's a contract completion date. And substantial completion is usually before that. The, a lot of important things happen on substantial completion because the contractors then get the percent retention left, the punch list value. So basically, the contractor has 30 days from substantial completion to complete the punch list. Okay. Let's see, anything else just on general updates on where we're at?
Are we still on track for earlier than anticipated opening date?
Yeah, so we're still finalizing an opening date. You know, obviously, there's a lot of transition between the police and fire department moving in. The town is working with the, they just awarded a contract in the last couple of months for the traffic signal out front. So that's, that always comes into play when that's timed and when that is complete. So as Bob noted, you know, the time of substantial completion of April 15th, roughly 30 to 60 days afterwards is when, you know, the town can start moving themselves in. So I would say, you know, an early summer, midsummer of ribbon cutting, you know. That hasn't been determined yet, but you know, those are the brief timeline of where we're heading.
Okay. Tom, is there anything else you wanted to add on this?
No, I've toured the facility. It looks fantastic. There's paint going on, going up. There's, the place inside is no longer looking like a construction zone, it's looking like a building. And it's very exciting. So I know the chiefs have been there. Deputy Levinson has been front and center for this whole effort. And everyone's happy and with the progress and excited to move in.
Okay. So we're at the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
But still got a way to go, that's for sure. Okay, one of the amendments that we're requesting today is an amendment with KBA to authorize, and it's called Amendment Number Five. I think you probably have paperwork on it. It's a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000, which had always been part of our budget. It's just they hadn't gone through and actually had an amendment to go ahead and do it. And what they're doing, and Sean can will chime in in a moment, but the, this money, the designer is intimately involved in all the decisions on furnishings and equipment, fixtures, furnishings and equipment, FFNE. And that's what they're working very hard on right now with the police department and the fire department, to determine what, what they need to take it over, what money, what we can afford, which is another thing we can talk about at some point. But we really don't know. There are a couple of question marks on whether federal money's going to come in or not. But basically, Sean's operation has been working for the last year on FFNE issues. Many, many meetings with the departments and, you know, proposals back and forth, and with the procurement office on some of the items. So basically, they've already been working for free on this item. But now we're getting around to just issuing a Amendment Number Five for a not-to-exceed $60,000 amount. If they actually spend less, the town pays less. So it's not a lump sum amount. So you want to give us a little briefing on?
Right, yeah. So, you know, understanding, you know, when the departments are looking to move in, you know, we need furniture. So we've been working with both, both chiefs, Deputy Levinson, related to kind of prioritizing the furniture, just because of some of the budget constraints. We actually had our final meeting this morning with the departments to finalize all the finishes. So we're going to get the finalized pricing within the next few weeks, probably by the end of the year. And we'll be ready to have a recommendation to the committee for purchase of furniture, depending on that timeframe. Typically, it's about a five-month lead time on this furniture. You know, so January is kind of our drop-dead date for, to have all furniture arriving on time, or late spring, early summer. But again, you know, working with the budget, understanding where we're at, prioritizing the appropriate furniture, that's where we are. So again, we proceeded at risk, knowing that it's a necessity to complete this work, you know, for the town. And I said, like I said, we've completed all the design work, and we're almost at that point to have a recommendation for the committee.
So this is Amendment Number Five?
Amendment Number Five with KBA.
Right.
And not-to-exceed amount of $60,000 to perform services related to the development and acquisition of the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment for the project.
And so what does this, so on the first item, which was Change Order Number 19 that we were going to look at, I see what that does to the budget. Do we have one? Here we go, for the, for the $60,000. So it's changing the budget, the budget from, the total fee from 3.215 to 3.629 is what I'm seeing.
That's correct. That's the designer's budget.
Right.
KBA.
Yep.
That's after all five of the amendments, yeah?
That's more than $60,000.
Right. Right.
So that's everything?
I'm sorry. As Bob noted, that was allocated in the budget previously, so.
Right. Okay, so I've got no questions on Amendment Number Five. Liz, do you?
Can I just ask a quick question? Do we know how much we've spent already of the $60,000? I'm assuming it's time and materials?
Yeah, so upwards of about a couple of months ago, we were probably about $40,000.
Okay.
You know, so the last $10,000 to $15,000 will be, we're on site when the installation occurs. So we're inspecting, making sure everything's arriving, not damaged. And then once it's installed, you know, so that's really more punch listing and stuff like that. So to be perfectly honest, we typically run a lot more than the allocated $60,000, just because a lot of back and forth. So, but we've gone about through 80, 90% of that so far, or 80% so far.
Okay. But this will take us through?
The end.
Delivery, the end.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
I know specific questions on each item. I did have a question about the aggregate cost.
Okay. So then, at this point, we're only looking at Number Five, so, which is the third item on our vote list. So I'm prepared to take a motion on that.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign Amendment Number Five with Castle Booze Associates Incorporated for FFNE Design and Procurement Management Services in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second?
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. I got to tell you, every time I see Amendment Number Five, I don't know if you guys remember the song Mambo Number Five? It's like, it's going through my head as we're.
Oh, boy.
Been to too many of those events. Okay, let's continue.
Okay. You also have two amendments with the owners' project manager.
Yes.
Leroy Hill. One is Amendment Number Six, in the amount of not-to-exceed amount of $39,000. And the other is Amendment Number Seven, in the not-to-exceed amount of $186,000.
I'm going to stop you there. I'm not sure we have those, Tom.
I've done the $39,000 one because it was within my authorization.
Okay, so they're not before us.
Oh, that's all done?
Yes.
Okay, good. Do you have the $186,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. This is pretty interesting, because Lero Hill has been the owners' project manager since the very beginning of this project. And their original estimate, in fact, not their estimate, their time for performing is supposed to end December 31st of 2024. And they haven't asked for an extension yet, even though we all know that they'll still be doing work all the way up through August, probably. We asked them to put a proposal, and they were anxious to put a proposal together so that they can continue working. And we asked them to put a proposal together that was very sharp, and that would reflect the fact that they will be decreasing the amount of their services, to what they're doing right now. Like, right now, they have at least two full-time people. They're always overseeing the, you know, the testing and everything else on the project. They're all over it, but they will be cutting back. So their proposal for $186,000 assumes that it really comes the period January 1st, 2025, through August 30th, 2025. So that's what the request is by Lero Hill. You know, again, my committee has reviewed it and strongly recommended it. And we're requesting that we formalize Amendment Number Seven and exercise a contract amendment with Lero Hill in the amount of not-to-exceed $186,000.
So looking at their budget, this pushes it up to a little over, not a little, over 1.6 million.
Okay, yep.
And so, okay, so it's basically going from 1.5, under 1.5 to over 1.6.
So this was not part of the original budget?
Not part of the original budget, right.
And it's due to the delays?
Well, it's not that it was a delay. Well, let's see. It was always part of the bud, well, it wasn't funded, let's put it that way. It was always assumed that they would be carrying the project through the end. So, yeah, I guess it's because of an extension of time, really.
I mean, did the original contract assume that the building would be done by December 31st?
The original contract with them, which was signed in the schematic design stage.
Okay.
Maybe even before schematic design, actually.
Right, that's right.
This was some of the.
Several years ago.
The site remediation work, early on.
Yeah.
Took a few months. There were a few early-on site work, things that cost time that now we're, on the back end of the contract, we have.
Right, so the general contractor has gotten a time extension due to the legitimate issues that they encountered, primarily, you know, site work problems. And they've gotten a time extension, but the person who's supposed to be watching over their work has not gotten a time extension. But we know we're going to need the services through the end of the project. And again, their $186 is, you know, we worked with them a lot on it, and it reflects a drastic reduction in what they're currently getting paid for, really. They're usually, they're spending about $44,000 a month now. And so the $180, the.
Right, this would be less than three months.
Well, no.
No, it's going to be.
No, no, no. If they kept at their current burn rate, it'd be, it'd be less than three months.
Right.
And this is now.
Oh, that's right.
Eight, eight, four months, right. Is there any money left in the contingency?
Which one? Okay, that.
Where's this money coming from?
Yeah. So we have a plan to complete the building. As you know, the money that we had hoped would offset some of those early site considerations was from, Rep. Lynch had helped us find some money through an earmark process with the federal government. That money's been delayed because of the budgeting issues at the federal government level. We have a plan to be able to complete the building. There are some things that we would end up deferring, costs we would defer, and that we would implement over time to, but we'll be able to open the bud, open the building, like they're saying, in early summer, hopefully, early to midsummer, June-ish.
So the, yes, it's a budget, we have a budget problem, no question. If the money comes through the federal government, the budget problem's gone, and we're doing, we've been plenty of money. So we have to anticipate that we're not going to get it. Because, and, so we're working with Tom, as well as the OPM and the designer, on different options. But we just don't know exactly what's going to happen. We'll probably know within a month or two, I think. So with the different options, we can defer some of the current work that's under the construction contract. Rather not do that, but it's exterior work.
Right.
The focus is really to complete the building, so that they can take use in occupancy. So that is definitely what we're going to do. The other, the other area where there are still substantial amounts of money is in FFNE.
Right.
And the, so that, the amount currently in our budget for FFNE has dropped considerably from where it was in the very beginning of the project. So the real question is, will we have to cut back on FFNE, too, if we didn't have money? So all these things will be dealt with some way. Her other, I'm not sure, we'll be explaining this all to you in a couple of months.
Yes, okay.
So, but we just don't know some of the real pieces on whether we're going to get new fund, additional funding. But we're assuming we're not.
Got it.
At this point in time.
So, but we just voted on a contract. That $60,000 is a lot of it related to work on FFNE.
Right.
So what is the assumption there, that we are going to get, we're going to hold back on the FFNE, or that we're not going to hold back?
So we've, we've gone through all of the needs in the building, you know, everything, every office space, every chair, every table thing. And we've sat with each department, sorry, each fire, each chief.
Right.
To go through and prioritize exactly what they're going to need, what items they can bring over from the existing stations or not. So we have about four or five different priorities. So, you know, we'll, like I said before, the drop-dead date for majority of the priority one items would be mid-January. As we get closer and closer, and we know where the budget stands, we can start getting some of the other priority items. Might come a little bit later, a little bit shorter lead times. So that's, what we've exhausted a lot of our time on, and is identifying exactly what's needed day one, and then working our way through, you know, the remainder of whatever funds are left. So that's, that's our amendment, right, to finalize that work.
Right, so their amendment will include procuring equipment, the services related to get ready to procure equipment for the full-blown FFNE that we originally anticipated, but it could very well, so they'll do all the work they have to do to get it to a point of knowing just what we're going to procure. Then we have to decide, do we, what do we have the money to procure? So then we'll have to sit down with the departments to figure out what are the top priorities, and what can we move from old furniture or defer till next budget year or something.
And Sean, I'll be a part of that conversation as well, with the chiefs.
So I think the answer that I'm hearing to Liz's question about the contingency is that we had a substantial contingency fund, but it is not adequate to cover the increased costs that we're seeing. Is that a fair statement?
Sure, sure.
That we've seen since the beginning of the project. So the cost overages and the quote, the site remediation.
Right.
There's a number of large costs early on that moved the needle on the entire project.
Sure.
What we're saying is that there's a plan, thanks to what Sean has been doing, to try to implement what we need to implement from the beginning, and then defer some of these costs, and maybe the federal money comes. And maybe the federal money comes in and we're able to buy stuff, you know, a year after it's open. Or we have to use other funds, for instance, the annual capital project, or capital effort to bring in, you know, 10% of the remaining items a year, that kind of thing. What we're doing is we're prioritizing the infrastructure-level facility items first. So anything built into the building is what we're prioritizing, and that's what's gonna happen first.
Yep.
And then there'll be items that we're able to add as we need to.
Okay. So we're still on-
Can I ask a question? So if we continue down the road, kind of approving these costs, knowing that our contingency fund is, is pretty much depleted, where are we in terms of anticipating additional costs from now to on June?
Right, so, you know, construction's not complete. There's a few change orders here that I will discuss, obviously, in more detail. There will be some additional changes, you know, not of what we've seen in the past of large change orders. You know, it's more of them in probably like the $3,000 to $5,000 range, or just kind of some small coordination in, in the field coordination items and vice versa. So, you know, with Leroy Hill, you know, they've been allocating the budget, you know, they're, we've been shifting funding around with budgets that have already been identified, you know, whether it was under design services. You know, so there was kind of owner's contingency item. We still have a contingent number of dollars for construction still. I don't know what that value is. I think it's in like the $300,000, $350,000 range, which I would be shocked if we use all that in the remaining funds. That's on top of what we're gonna be discussing for tonight. You know, so it's a lot tighter than it should be at this point, but obviously with everything that's occurred over the last two years, you know, that's where we are. Again, we've been working with both the departments to come up with solutions that, you know, getting the infrastructure, getting everything in day one so that they can operate and function. And then over upcoming months or years, depending on what the funding, the funding is, complete it to 100% with furniture and fixtures and additional bells and whistles, if you will. If that's clear.
Got it. Okay, anything else on this request for the $186,000? And this is again to extend the duration of the owner's project management services. Any questions? If not, I'm prepared to take a motion on that.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign amendment number seven with LI Row Program in Construction Management, P E P C, to extend the duration of owner's project management services to August 30th, 2025 in an amount not to exceed $186,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay, approved. So we've got to deal with change orders number 19 and 20.
Right. Thank you, by the way. Okay, change order number 19. Again, our building committee has already reviewed these in detail, and we've recommended that both of these change orders... So now we're talking the construction contract. Both of these change orders get approved. The first one is change order number 19 in the amount of $63,711 and 57 cents. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's comprised of eight different items, and if you'd like, we could go over each item.
I think we can read, starting with 95, going down through 111 there.
Right, so these are somewhat typical construction changes throughout the project. So starting at number 95, this is coordination in the field, so our design documentation missed some ductwork. There had to be some modifications, some larger ductwork, so this is the change order for that change of $15,132.79. This is, that, sorry, the downdraft table, it's for the weapons cleaning area for the police department. So it's a necessity for their operations. Number 96 is a site landscaping wall. So due to some grading issues along Essington, there's a kind of steep grade change where the existing trees are, we had to go back to planning board to provide a small landscape retaining wall to help with that retain, to help with that grading change from Essington back down to our parking lots. So that's the installation cost of $28,078.83 to include that wall.
So you've got a decision of the planning board on that?
We did, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, again, it's pretty much running from the main public entrance
Yep.
all the way down to the private entrance for the fire department. Number 101, some fireproofing, some fireproofing at the mezzanine beams. So there was a couple of exposed beams that weren't encapsulated in some of the CMU, which we originally anticipated. So this is a small cost to come back to fireproof those beams. Temp fence relocation, number 102. So this is incorporating the separate contract that the town is engaged in for the traffic signal. So for, in order for them to incorporate their infrastructure, the, our construction fence had to move. So that's what that cost is for, for the contracts to move the fence and a trailer. Number 103, CMU training prop. So through the exercises of reducing a lot of the costs along the way with both the departments, this is a training prop that actually we're adding in, working with the fire department. So we ended up having a lot of extra space at the mezzanine. We had some storage rooms in some areas that, working with Deputy Levinson, the fire department, they felt it wasn't necessary. But then since they had all this extra space, it was a good opportunity for some extra training opportunities. So that's a small upcharge to provide this training prop in CMU and at the mezzanine at the apparatus bay. Number 106, garage roof slab modifications. A lot of this had to do with the way that the garage, upper deck of the garage had to be poured in two different pores and the way it, it's very complicated, but it's just the way it had to be constructed with close proximity to the Sally port, as well as additional rebar. There's quite a bit of pieces involved in this, but it's, again, a small upcharge with this roof slab at the upper deck of the garage. Fire-rated door, room 346. So this has to do with what's called the BDA, which is a bidirectional antenna. And this is to help, or this is to supplement or to add communication inside the building for the fire and police departments with their radios. Since we're, a large portion of our building's below grade, we have a lot of CMU. We tend to include the actual antenna, but we needed to provide a fire-rated room in our enclosure. This door wasn't a fire-rated door, so we had to, we had to include, or we had to add a fire-rated door.
Are you saying the original plan did not have a fire-rated door, and this is a change?
Correct, because not all buildings require BDAs. It's tested at the time of halfway through construction, when everything's constructed and built and CMU walls are up. So working with the fire department, working with the communications vendor, they went and tested specific locations of the building. And it was determined that a BDA was required. If it wasn't required, it would have been accorded back to the project. So, yes, unfortunately, in the, we're actually taking over storage room at the third level to encompass this, the antenna location to be terminated. So it's a small upcharge for a fire-rated door in frame. Lastly, ceiling removal in room 242. We were making some modifications, some soffits and some ceilings that kind of helped simplify another portion of the building where there were credits. But this was a small upcharge because of the, we had to modify the ceiling to make a credit of something more decorative. It's kind of a one-off from a few change orders ago. So again, these are all, some of them are pretty minor. Yes, a couple of larger ones. But, you know, all of these accompanying into a total value of over $50,000, so that's all right.
Bob, are you comfortable with this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we went through it in detail and we recommended it. And everybody voted for it.
Bill, any questions?
None.
Liz?
No questions on this specifically, and I trust Bob and the committee certainly on the recommendation. I guess I'm trying to get a sense of, though, how much are these things that are, we've changed the scope, which absolutely that's fair for us to pay for, versus these were design mistakes.
Right, so typically on projects of this scale, you know, design error, what do you call them, errors or emissions, whatever you want to call them, you know, it usually runs around about 1% or 2% of the entire length of the project. You know, of a project of $50 million, you know, you're usually upwards of, you know, a million, a million and a half of errors and emissions. By eliminating or removing the upfront, you know, the dirt removals and the, and the, I don't need to rehash all that, we're below 1% on these things. So it is typical. Obviously, we strive for perfection. It's nearly impossible.
Sure. No, that's good perspective. I mean, and that's why we have the contingency budget.
Exactly, right.
Okay, so we're, and you said even with these, we're still within, because these would come out of the construction contingency.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then when we presented these to the committee, had all the, how it all was shifted around and what monies were left after this would have been approved.
Okay.
And there are still monies left, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, do you want anything?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm prepared to take a motion on change order number 19.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign change order number 19 with Colantonio Incorporated for the cost proposals outlined in change order dated November 19th, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $63,711.57.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We'll move on to change order number 20.
Okay, by the way, we're hoping that we're getting to the very end of change orders. There might be a couple here and there, but there really have not been, compared to a lot of projects, there have not been that many changes. We did have the two big ones with the, right off the bat, so...
Yes.
Okay, so change order number 20.
This is $111,000.
Let's see, here we go.
So I'll go through each one again, and then we get into more detail of any specific questions. So number 81 is a mezzanine slab placement due to apparatus bay hindrance. You know, it's kind of a weird way of how the contractor gave us that quote. But basically, this came down to sequencing and scheduling within the apparatus bay. There were some questions that we needed to give some answers to, so there was a delay in how they had to pour the mezzanine within the apparatus bay. So this is a change of sequence on the contractor, so it's a slight upcharge for that work. Number 131, sorry, 113, card reader for key control cabinet. This is one of those design errors. We did not include a key, a card access at where the car, sorry, key control cabinet is located for all the police vehicles and other keys that are housed by the police department. So that's a small upcharge for that added, additional card reader. This is a small credit related to, number 114, a rigid conduit for the light pole deduct. So they provided flexible conduits during our site walks, you know, we noticed that, so they provide a small credit on that. Number 117, revised window openings. So if you are outside of the building, you see what's called spandrel glass. Basically, that's a solid, or appears to be a solid glass. When you're standing within the space, it was kind of in-the-field design or a decision to, sorry. We had walls on the inside of those spandrel glass pieces. Working with the fire department, they were saying, we don't want those walls behind the glass. We want, we want to see more glass, let in a little bit more light. So that's what that cost is for, is to bring the walls back to expose that spandrel glass.
Okay.
And there's a slight upcharge for carrying the sill across the, most of it's in the bunk areas and the office spaces. So it just gives a little bit more diffuse light in those spaces.
Got it.
So it was kind of a real-time design decision. So the next two are, obviously, I'm assuming you're gonna have quite a few questions. So one of the owners, vendors that would be providing typically on this project, which we are on this project, is what's called a...
Emergency generator?
No, no, I'm trying, I'm trying to blink on that.
Alcom. Alcom.
The station lighting system, sorry. So the station lighting system, what that is for is when a call comes in, you know, whether it's for police or fire, it gets distributed throughout the building and it's through, you know, speakers in the ceiling, speakers on the walls, lights are going on, lights are coming off. So that, number 120, is, is for the electrician to come in and provide infrastructure for the wiring for a separate owner's vendor to come in and complete all the wiring. Unfortunately, not all of that was captured in this contract with the general contractor. So these are some additional pieces for them to come in. Another unfortunate thing, we've been working with the, this vendor, which is only two in the state that can provide this equipment and wiring since back in like June, and it was just getting delayed and delayed. We went back and forth, and unfortunately, some of the walls were getting, drywall was going up. So this is a little bit of a premium on it just because of where the project is at the current state. But we've, we vetted it, we've gone through with our electrician, we've gone through with this Alcom vendor, which is all communications for the station lighting system. So it's actually, yes, it's a large number. I'm not, I'm not stating it's not, but it's actually quite reduced to what it could have been. So that's, that's for the electrician to go through and complete all that infrastructure so that the Alcom can come in and do all the wiring and install the components for the station lighting system.
Do you have to take down walls that were?
No.
Okay.
So it's more of, you know, because ceiling grids are starting to go in, so it's just kind of, makes it a little bit more difficult to install some of the stuff for the electrician.
Right.
If the walls weren't up. But we're not taking down any walls, not taking any drywall. There's just some, potential some patch and some repair here and there. But not to get into too much of the details, but really there's providing back boxes with strings that go behind the walls up to the ceilings. You know, sometimes it'd be the conduits, but it's not required. So there's providing what's called a pull string to the back of the box so that when Alcom comes in, they're just grabbing those strings and completing the wiring. So unfortunately, it's just a lot of effort to, you know, so it's all labor, not all, but the majority of that number is labor. Number 121, cutting and patching. So this is just an allowance from the general contractor for some patch and repair, you know, there may be some with ourselves and the OPM team overseeing it. It should be very minimal, you know, it might be some painting here and there, but it's not gonna be that extensive. So that's an allowance number.
So that means that we'll only pay for what we actually draw down.
Right. And so Bob, you, your committee-
Oh, yeah, yeah, we recommended it all. It was, it was kind of complicated because the Alcom system, we didn't procure that. My committee was procured through the procurement office, and they took the system from a state-owned list. And the price, which was probably a good price and everything, it's just that now we, our guy has to, our electrician has to install it all, all the infrastructure to make that whole system work, because we didn't have that system when we went out to bid.
Right. Okay. Bill, any questions?
No question.
Liz?
Just a question about the electrician's work. Does that have any impact on the permits or the inspection?
No, no. So it's really, like I said, there's providing back boxes
Okay.
and strings. You know, it's just a lot of labor.
Okay.
And certain locations, but no, it won't have anything to do with inspection.
Okay.
Well, yes, it'll be inspected, but it won't cause any delay.
Okay, great.
Got it. Tom, anything to add?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, then I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign change order number 20 with Colantonio Incorporated for the cost proposals outlined in change order dated December 11th, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $111,142.54.
So that would be the change order of November 19th?
Nope, nope, that's a mistake. It's December 11th.
Oh, it is December?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. And I believe that completes all of the change order requests for your committee.
That's all we have to know for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
No, thank you very much for your-
Thank you. Thank you.
We're getting close.
Your good questions.
Getting there.
Okay, next on our agenda.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is a discussion turning, concerning the July 4th- Is a discussion turning, concerning the July fourth harbor events and a possible vote. Tom, do you want to lead us on this?
Sure. So led by the efforts of the Harbor Development Committee, the, there is a plan in place to have, in, in place of a fireworks show, which Hingham traditionally had had back a few years and then a number of years prior to that. We had, we have pivoted from a fireworks show to a drone show. And so this drone show is costly. It comes with, you have specific experts that know how to do this and that do this for a living as a business. So Mark LeBoire, as chair of the, of the Harbor Development Committee, did some research and found a vendor that could help us with this drone show. We've also identified donors to cover the cost of the drone show. But in order to do this on town property, we wanted to have a contract with that, with the drone show provider with the town to use town property for the event. So this contract is for sixty thousand dollars or so to bring a drone company in to do that work. And it, yeah, so if you have any questions, I can. John Cofflin is online as well, he's helped us draft this contract.
And what, what is the anticipated date that the drone show would?
July second, 2025.
Great. Liz, any questions?
I don't, I've reviewed it and reviewed it with Tom, and I know John Cofflin has reviewed it as well as the Harbor Development Committee, so I'm comfortable with it.
Bill?
I have no question. I've been talking about this for months now, so I'm pretty well aware of it. But just to be clear, Tom, the, the cost of the actual show has been, is through a very generous donation of a family in town, correct?
That's exactly right.
There'll be no cost of taxpayers.
No, that's right.
And so at some point, you will, we will appropriately thank that.
Of course.
The donors.
Absolutely, yep.
And so we, we will have a motion that I assume if that motion passes, we will date the contract. The version we have is undated.
Yes.
So that we can proceed. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with, is it Hire UAV Pro LLC to perform the Fourth of July Drone Light Show in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Thank you. Now move on to consider approval of the 2025 common victory license renewals, and we have a list.
That's your agenda, I think. Want to look here?
Yes.
It is, there we go. So Tom has, has the select board office reviewed these proposed license, licenses and every, is everything in order?
We have, and it is in order.
And do any of these require review of the police department?
No.
Okay, great. I see a lot of familiar names here and I believe that this is all in order. I'm prepared, before I do, any questions, Liz?
Just the, any of the restaurants that provide beer or wine, those are, those have been done, I think we already did them, right?
Correct.
Separate license process.
Right.
Okay. No other questions?
Bill?
No questions.
Then I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the common victory licenses presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We will then move on to the 2025 limousine license renewals. And I believe we have a list that consists of one.
Just the one, yep.
Which is Charles B. Livery. Tom, again, has this been reviewed and approved by your office?
It has been and we've had no problems with this provider.
Any questions, Bill?
None.
Liz?
No questions.
Neither do I. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the limousine license as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Next item would be appointments, and I don't believe we have any scheduled for this evening.
None.
So I will move on to public comment. Are there members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda? I am not seeing any. We move on to town administrator select board reports, and I'll begin with Art Robert.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing else.
Mr. Ramsey?
Well, wish everybody happy holidays, so last meeting until January, correct?
It is.
Okay, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Joy.
And a safe holiday. And I have nothing to report. At this point, next item on our agenda is an executive session under Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A Six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under this item on the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the town. I'm now prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A Six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The board will not reconvene in open session.
Roll call vote. I'm sorry, we have a second.
Second.
Sorry. Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We will move to executive session and we will not reconvene in open session. Thank you.
Good night.